But we're now live streaming.
Yep, so I'll set whenever you guys are ready.
Okay, well, I'm gonna start the meeting. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Larchmont. Tonight is Monday, May 17th. But the record show the entire board is present. We also have with us our two chiefs. We have the village attorney Jim Stout. We have village administrator Justin Bettino and village treasurer Kimberly Gutwine and village deputy clerk Brian Riley. Please join me in the pledge. Give me just a moment to share my my flag image. Okay, here we go, guys. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was pretty good. That was wonderful, folks. We're for I for many reasons, we're looking forward to moving from Zoom meetings to regular meetings and and in unison, not quite in unison, pledge is definitely one of the one of the things we're looking forward to. So this evening I have I have a couple of announcements. First, a sad one marking the passing of someone who has been a very important member of this community for a long time. And that would be Phyllis Whitner. Phyllis Whitner was on the town of Mamarone Council for 18 years. And she founded or helped found or pushed everybody to found Liswick, which is the Long Island Sound Watershed Intermunicipal Council, which had all of the Sound Shore communities that that put water into the watershed that flows into the Long Island Sound. So New Rochelle, Mount Vernon, Scarsdale, the Palms, Mamarone, Portchester. We all worked together in Liswick to find ways to collaborate on sewer issues, stormwater issues, and things that would affect the environment of the Long Island Sound. She was a great environmentalist. As a matter of fact, she actually wrote the book, The History of Conservation in the Town of Mamarone, 1948 to 2006. And you can see here in the corner that it was written by Phyllis Whitner. So our condolences go out to her family. Her husband of, I think, maybe 70, 70 years, Dr. Murray Whitner, passed six weeks before she did. And I was able to attend a memorial service for her that was held by Zoom. Many people who worked with her for many, for years, a former town supervisor Valerie O'Keefe, village trustee Marlene Colbert and others came on and had an opportunity to say a few words and and have some fun reminiscences about Phyllis. She was a very, very strong personality. Anyone who knew her knows that. I have to say that Phyllis actually is the reason that I'm in local government. And as I said on her memorial, I'm not sure if I should thank her or be very, very angry with her. But I was working on the garden of her brother, Arthur Gilman, and she lives around the lived around the corner from Arthur. She stopped to ask me some questions about what I was doing. And and then asked more questions and more questions. She found out I was a resident of the Village of Larchmont. She found out that I was a geology major, had been an environmental geologist, and I was a landscape designer. And she said, Well, I have a job for you. I really need you on my coastal zone management committee. The village of Larchmont is short and we need somebody to join. And she pushed me and pushed me and I finally was like, Okay, okay, Phyllis, Uncle, I'll join. So I joined that committee and after about a year I became the co-chair of that committee. And a year later, when an opening on the village board of trustees came up, I was asked and accepted the the request to throw my hat in the ring to run for trustee. And that brings us to where I am today. So blame it all on Phyllis Whitner. And then the other announcement I have tonight is regarding the latest mask mandates. Today, the governor announced that New York State will be following the CDC guidelines that have been recently issued. That will be effective on Wednesday. We're waiting for the actual executive order with all the details. And we can get some more specific information out to everyone as soon as that's released. But generally speaking, if you are vaccinated, you do not need to wear masks except for public transportation in schools, healthcare facilities. But also remember that businesses will continue to be allowed to require customers to wear masks to come into their place of business. So understanding that this is all quite new to us, that business owners need to be in their place of business all day long and interact with many, many people. So if they put a sign in their door that says masks required, please respect their decision and understand where it comes from and and be polite and compliant with that. For the rest of us who are vaccinated, yay, it's wonderful. I was out all day today without a mask, except when I went into a store and it really, really feels great. I I'm sure trustee Finelli will speak on this, but I want to get my thanks in at the beginning to to trustee Finelli, to Ken Dirks, to Chris Gerosa, Monica Um, Tim Kemp, Chris Abad. Did I miss anybody? For their work in helping to put together the Larchmont Music Festival, which took place this past Saturday in Constitution Park. What a wonderful way to not only kick off the beginning of this summer season, but to to be able to celebrate the fact that we're at this point in this very, very difficult year and a half. And we can gather together and we can start to experience life as a community again and really, really feels good. Another little data point I'd like to share with you is that the Larchmont postal zip code 10538 at this point is about 65% vaccinated. And I think that's very good considering children can't get vaccinated yet. Those over 12 now can, but that's just recently. So they're not yet included in those numbers. So we're doing very well in the 10538. Not every community in Westchester has as high a vaccination rate as we do. So, you know, keep that in mind as you move around the county and when you make decisions about how you want to behave. I wanted to let you know that Westchester County will be vaccinating the 12 to 15 year olds at the county center and they have the Pfizer vaccine, which is the one that's approved for that age group. You can go on the vaccination portal and find a an appointment, I think, quite easy at this point to get appointments. And they're also partnering with school districts around the county to provide vaccinations to middle school and high school students. So that's what we have on the on the COVID front. I'm now, I have no other announcements. I have no appointments at this position in my in my agenda. I'll wait until we get to the resolutions on number nine for that appointment. So I'm going to move to item number three, which is a report from the police chief. So Chief Bowway, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, ma'am. First, we'll start with a couple of things on police personnel. First, we'll talk about Captain Regano. On Monday, May 31st, 2021, Captain Tony Regano will be retiring after 32 years of police service to the village of Larchmont. Captain Regano has been an exceptional, dedicated and professional representative of law enforcement, and his presence will surely be missed. He has epitomized the values and integrity that all police officers aspire to and has served as an excellent example to numerous police officers, both here in Larchmont and throughout Westchester County. Captain Regano's efforts have greatly enhanced and moved the department forward, and he will be remembered as a cop's cop. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve to have served with him. And I congratulate him on his many accomplishments and wish him a safe, happy and peaceful retirement. New sergeant Detective Lisa Pompelio was promoted to the rank of sergeant on March 29th, 2021. The vacancy was created as a result of the retirement of Sergeant Glenn Carney. Sergeant Pompelio is an eight-year veteran of the Larchmont Police Department, and she has served as a detective since February of 2015. She has also served as the department's school resource, resource officer and youth detective. Sergeant Pompelio recently successfully completed a three-week intensive course in police supervision at the Westchester County Police Academy. In the capacity of sergeant, she will directly supervise subordinate members assigned to the patrol division and will further be responsible for various ancillary assignments. Sergeant Pompelio has been an asset to the department in her different roles, and we wish her success in her new assignment. New police officer, on May 10th, 2021, Joseph Abooti became the newest member of the Larchmont Police Department. The vacancy for his position was created by the resignation of Sean Michael Kenny, who you remember was here for about a month, very short-lived. Officer Booty is 28 years of age and resides in Northport, New York. He holds an associate of science degree in business administration, and he is currently working towards his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Farmingdale College. Officer Booty demonstrated excellent communication skills during his interview process and displayed good judgment and an understanding of the police role as it applies to the village of Larchmont. He was formerly employed by the New York State Park Police, and as a current member of a law enforcement agency, he was available to accept appointment immediately, and it was not necessary, not necessary to enroll him in the Westchester County Police Academy. It is anticipated that after field training, he will assume full patrol duty assignments. So Joe is a great guy and he so far has worked out very well, and we're going to continue to train him so we can get him out onto the street and he can start answering patrol assignments. We just completed firearms training for the police department over the course of the past two weeks at the Blue Ridge range up in Peekskill. It's a New York State facility. Everyone successfully completed the program, and this is part of our biannual certification. The next course will take place sometime in the fall, probably October. Metered parking, as you are aware, metered parking will become becoming too large on effective June 1st, 2021. This is a new system, and I urge all residents and visitors to Larchmont to please educate yourself about how to use, how to use it so any potential problems can be avoided. For more information about parking, please visit, visit the village website anytime at www.villageoflarchmont.org or call 834-6230, Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Speaking of parking, there is no parking on Park Avenue. Just a reminder that as of May 15th through September 15th, there is no parking on Park Avenue from Larchmont Avenue, from Larchmont Avenue to the entrance of Manor Park on Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays. As people seek to use Manor Park and the surrounding areas or for parking anywhere in the village, it is always a good practice to take time to read the parking signs to ensure that you are not in violation. Bicycle thefts. There have been an increase in reports of bicycle thefts occurring in residential neighborhoods. Please make sure that bicycles are not left unattended in plain sight and locked or stored in a garage wherever possible. It appears these crimes are being committed during daylight hours, so stay vigilant and report any suspicious activity to the police department immediately. So what we're finding is there are at least one or two individuals that have been going around during daylight hours, and these are crimes of opportunity. So while they, there have been several bicycle thefts, there have also been a few cars that have been broken into. So it doesn't have to occur at night. Obviously, it can occur during the day. We ask everybody to please be vigilant, and if you do see something that's not normal to you, to call the police department immediately. And finally, see something, say something. With the Memorial Day holiday approaching, I would like to remind everyone to stay vigilant in reporting any suspicious activity that may be observed. If you observe something that may be suspicious, please do not keep it to yourself. Call the 24-hour New York State Terrorism Tips line at 866-SAFE-NYS or call the Larchmont Police Department at 914-834-000 or simply dial 911. And this concludes my report for this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, chief. I actually ran into Officer Abooti with Dan Calipari this this morning. And it was nice to be able to see him again. It took, it did take a while from our initial interview to get all the paperwork completed for for him to join us. And he seemed quite eager to get out and start working.
Yeah, I think he's going to be a great addition to the department. He seems to get along with everybody so far. I was at the range with him for the eight hours on the day that we went. Very capable and in control of what he was doing, a personal type of gentleman. Again, we think he's going to be a good fit. It did take a while because county personnel actually forwarded the approval to Albany, so that tacked on a few weeks. But yeah, we have him here and he's secured, as it were.
Yes.
We look forward to him being a new police officer. And we are also in the process of beginning to interview other police officers, and we have an agility scheduled for May 22nd for some of the candidates that we're reviewing at this point.
Right, okay. And for Captain Regano, you know, of course, he's he's not on this meeting this evening, but want to let the community know that the board definitely appreciates his many years of service to the village. Sarah and I specifically appreciate his contribution to the Police Reform and Reinvention Committee and his vociferous support for the concept of accreditation and his, his, his many years of wishing that we could have achieved that. And I think now, having gone through that process and had the the plan, we can now form a committee that can get that accomplished, get that done. And it would be, it would be a really good thing.
Obviously, as a result of police reform, it's something that all departments should aspire to. Captain Regano had a good sense of it very early on in his career, and for various reasons, it just, it never kind of transformed.
Right.
But he has been a true professional his whole career and is really educated, especially the younger members of the service about all the nuances of police work. So again, after 32 years, we're going to lose a good deal of institutional knowledge there and experience. So but he's retiring and we certainly wish him well.
Absolutely. He he deserves to take some some time off and enjoy his family and and relax a little bit.
No doubt.
I'm going to move to item number four, which is the report from the fire chief, Eve Caprilli.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everybody. The fire department will begin annual hose testings this month. Please be mindful of the firefighters working in front of village hall when you're passing by. Fire hoses may be laid out in the street, on the apron to the fire department and along some portions of the sidewalk. So please watch your step, but feel free to observe the firefighters at work. Fire safety inspections continue to be conducted. Please prepare your business for your annual inspection by ensuring all fire suppression systems, fire alarms, including smoke and carbon dioxide detectors. Fire extinguishers and emergency contact information are up to date and in good working order. To schedule your inspection, please call 914-834-0016 and speak to one of the on-duty staff. The entire month of May is National Wildfire Awareness Month. Not that wildfires are prevalent here in Larchmont or this part of the Lower Hudson Valley, but many of us use outdoor fire pits, outdoor fireplaces on a regular basis. These fires, although enjoyable and seemingly harmless, may pose a danger to surrounding homes and open land due to embers traveling through the air and igniting combustible material far away from their source. Fire pits, chimeneas and fireplaces outdoors are permitted by the New York State Fire Code. So some precautions to observe while enjoying the outdoor fire are fires should only be used under adult supervision to monitor for wind conditions, flying embers and smoke traveling toward neighbors. Very important about that one. Fires should be in a controlled, I'm sorry, in a non-combustible container such as a metal fire ring, brick or stone fireplace or ceramic chimenea. Fires should be at least 15 feet from all combustibles, overhanging foliage, power lines and vehicles. Fires should be made with wood, using a very, very, very important. Fires should be made with wood. Using accelerants to aid in starting a fire is extremely dangerous and can cause a fire to quickly get out of control. Always keep emergency extinguishing material nearby such as water or sand and always fully extinguish the fire with by soaking it with water until the ash is cold to the touch. Most accidental fires occur by by abandoned fires that were thought to be extinguished. Switching to my code enforcement role, completed permit applications for outdoor dining would do April 1st, 2021 for restaurants using public space such as the sidewalks and the street space for tables and chairs. If you have not done so already, please submit your completed permit application to continue using the outdoor public space. Village Code 180 leapblowers have been in effect for some time now, and both the police department and myself have been enforcing the code with good results. Please remember, the operator, the landscape company and the homeowner are liable for escalating penalties under the new code. Leapblowers of any kind are banned from the from the month of May to October 15th. And then after January 1st, 2021, 22, leapblowers with an internal combustion engine or gas-powered engine are banned entirely. We appreciate your cooperation. All apparatus are in service and everything and all equipment is fully operational, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. I don't have a question, but I do have a request. I was going by the LT today and they were building their platforms.
Yes, I didn't see.
I spoke with the the manager about the need for a cutout along the curve. Right. So if you can just check in there tomorrow and see that they've they've done it the way it needs to be done, so we don't have a drainage back up there.
Sure, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief? Okay, we're going to move on to number five, report from the attorney, Mr. Stout.
I think for this meeting, mayor, except I wish Captain Regano the best.
Thank you. And we'll move along to the treasurer, number six. Treasurer, would you like to wait until we get to your resolutions?
Yes, please, mayor. Thank you.
Yep. Trustee reports. I'm going to start with trustee Finelli.
Thank you, mayor. Recreation News. 2021 Flint Park Day Camp, register online only. Registration began March 22nd. Camp begins July 6th. Camp ends on August 13th, 2021. For more information, contact Joyce Callahan at recreation@villageoflarchmont.org. Flint Park Tennis and Pickleball Permits. The tennis courts are open and your neighbors are playing. You must have a permit to play tennis or pickleball. Permits can be purchased online at villageoflarchmont.org. Don't delay. Do it today. Get out there and hit some balls and make new friends. Flint Park Paddle Permits. Paddle players are playing. There were still permits available. They can be used from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. Last day of permit use is September 30th, 2021. Cost of a permit is $150. For more information, recreation@villageoflarchmont.org. There are still a few spots open for Flint Park Day Camp counselors. For the 2021 Day Camp season, Flint Park Day Camp counselors, if interested, you must be 16 years or older as of 7/6/21. Click on counselor application at the village website. As the mayor had stated earlier, Larchmont Music and Constitution Park, it finally happened Saturday, 5/15/21. There was live music in Constitution Park, but most of the performers, as well as the audience, it was their first taste of music in well over a year. And what a day it was. The weather was perfect, the music fantastic, there were variety of bands and music types. You have to thank Ken Dirks because of his talented musicians and organization of musical talent. He put together a large array of highly skilled musicians that hit the main stage on Saturday. The bands rocked the audience. It was a great time had by all. Thank you, Ken, and Ken's company. It was, it was a great organizational feat for those gentlemen and ladies. We also have to thank the LFD event team for keeping the audience safe and making sure everyone was checked in and the crowds were all CDC compliant. As well, the LFD event team stayed on site, some of them for 14 hours. Others came in and did a shift or two. Thank you to all of them. We also have to thank the volunteer fire department for their work on the events that have taken place in the park. Their dedication to community and service to the village of Larchmont is extraordinary. It's extraordinary. Well done. I want to give a shout out to Joe Clifton, who stayed with the rescue all day and all night. Budge, 14 hours he stayed in that truck. And at the very end of the night, the lights went out in the park and we needed him at 10, at 10:30 or 10 o'clock, the lights went out. And Rescue was there to save the day. Additionally, we want to thank the LFD Career Firefighters, the Larchmont Police Department and the Department of Public Works for making this event so successful. Once again, if you are interested in becoming a volunteer firefighter or being a part of the LFD event team, please contact me, Baba Finelli, 914-403-2387. I as well want to say to Captain Regano, thank you very much for your 32 years of service. I always enjoyed your company on all of the events, in particular, the parades. It was always fun to see you out there and I wish you the best of everything to you, your family, and nothing but success. Thank you for your service and your time. That's it for me, ma'am.
Thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Nothing to report, mayor, but I just want to echo what everyone else has said about Saturday's event. It was absolutely fabulous, and thank you so much to everybody who helped make it a success. And I also would like to wish Captain Regano the best in his retirement.
Thank you. Trustee Herman.
No report tonight, but also best wishes to Captain Regano on a wonderful career and thank you for your service to Larchmont.
Trustee Brennan.
I also echo Saturday was so much fun. Thank you to everybody who participated that was and and made it possible. One quick announcement, you may have seen that the Larchmont Environmental Committee has been working on two programs, the Grid Rewards Program and the Community Solar Program. Through their hard work and their dedication to get that information out to the community, they met the goal for the incentive program and Larchmont will be receiving $9,000 in grants because of that. And they worked on this project with the town of Mamarone and the village of Mamarone, and both of those municipalities also met the goal. So all of us will be able to get the grant rewards, which is really fun and exciting. So we will continue to keep, you know, abreast of any other opportunities like this, but really, it's really a thank you to all the community members that we couldn't have done it without you. So everyone who signed up and joined this, thank you. And the Grid Rewards Program has closed for this year, but the Community Solar Program is still open. So if you haven't had a chance to sign up, you can go ahead and sign up for that program and save some money. And finally, I, as you know, as a new member of the board, I haven't had a chance to work with the captain, but I have been a member of Larchmont for 22 years. And as a resident, I would like to thank him for his incredible service to our community, and I wish him well on his retirement.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the administrators' report, but I'm betting that the administrator wants to roll on into resolutions.
Yes, please, mayor. I have a lot to, lot to talk about tonight on the resolution stand front.
You go right ahead.
Thank you. Certainly, just just to say farewell and thank you to Captain Regano. I mean, institutional knowledge is an understatement. The, his mind really works like an encyclopedia. He's very precise with information and record-keeping and and articulate too, to always be able to provide that when needed. And he's been a great help to me when I first came on board to understand the workings of the department, the staffing and and, you know, where we've came from to how we got here. And that's, that's always important because it's, it's not always, you know, what you have today is, is how did, how did we come to this? And Captain Regano was always able to put those pieces and fill in those blanks and and that institutional knowledge and his personality and his dedication, his work ethic, there's a lot to be said for him. He's omnipresent, so to speak, with the department, and I'll appreciate that that work ethic anywhere and anyone who has it, and he certainly is it. anywhere, and anyone who has it, and he certainly is it. For resolutions, the first one I, I'll speak on right now is the MS four, we introduced that last meeting. The MS four report was introduced, again, it's a New York State requirement that we, since we discharge into open bodies of water, it speaks to our compliance and our ongoing efforts to improve and manage water quality. And, and again, I spoke on all of our efforts, I think there's six measures and six criteria that we, we have to show efforts on. That, that was posted to the website. As far as I'm aware, we have received no commentary or questions or otherwise on that report. I haven't received any questions from the board. At this juncture, I would request that the board formally move to adopt and approve that report, so I can send it on to New York State, so that we don't get any, you know, slaps on the hand from.
So I seek a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one MS four stormwater report.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, I'll skip the next two, as those, Kimberly and the mayor. As for the tax warrant.
Would you like me to pull the tax warrant up?
No, no, I'd rather just discuss it because the one that was, that made it to the clerk's office had a, had a typo.
Okay.
So the revised, and just so what everyone knows, the tax warrant is a result of an adopted budget. Now the treasurer must go ahead and collect that money of which we're gonna, we need to run the next fiscal year. The tax warrant lists any items that are going to be on someone's tax bill. The main one is the tax levy for twenty-one, twenty-two, and that amount is fifteen million two hundred ninety-four dollars, excuse me, fifteen million two hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars. That, that's the total amount levied by property taxes to run the operation next year. It's not the full amount, because we have non-property tax revenue that is not subject to property tax collection, that's why it's on the tax warrant. The other items have to do with late payments for a variety of things, such as the street scale assessment, the sidewalk sixty forty program, water bills, sewer bills, and alarm bills. All of those items are subject to be collected, if not paid timely, on the subsequent property tax. The other calculations, as they are, are correct, so the total tax levy, excuse me, tax warrant is fifteen million four hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty cents. And once approved by the board, these will be posted around the village, and then now our tax bills will be completed, and speaking to the board and work session, that's the last component to getting our tax bills finalized, so that they can then be generated and posted either in the mail or online.
Okay, so I seek a motion, unless there are any questions from anyone. I seek a motion to approve the tax, the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two tax warrant for the total amount of fifteen million four hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty cents.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. The next item has to do with water. So, so everyone that's maybe not aware, the village has a water utility, which provides drinking water to all residents within Larchmont, and a small strip of Dean Place to those folks who live in the Town of Amerenek. And we're kind of a wholesale customer from Westchester Joint, who then, they receive their water from New York City. That's the way it worked out in the sixties and seventies, maybe even to the fifties, when Larchmont shifted away from, from its own filtration operation, its own reservoir, to purchasing its water through New York City's Aqueduct system. But based on that kind of ability just to buy and not necessarily worry about all of the intricacies, comes along the, the price, the price tag. When New York City increases its rates, we have to increase our rates to keep up. The, the purchase of water that we then sell and treat and sell to the public is about forty percent of the water fund's budget, so changes in that price can really be a detriment to the water fund if we're not keeping that cost flowing through, so to speak, to the customer. We've been advised that New York City intends to increase its rates, its base rate, which is kind of like the allotment that you're, you're expected to use on a daily basis, and just for a short sentence, it's a per capita number based on an apartment dweller's usage in New York City. It's about a hundred and fifty, I think, per gallons per capita per day. So they use that metric along with our population, and that's the base rate amount of water or entitlement water. Anything above that has a three and a half times penalty, which is called the excess fee or the excess charge. Because we, most of our population is not apartment dwellers, and they have property and irrigation needs, et cetera, we often pay the excess per capita rate in the peak usage months, which are May, June, July, August, and even into September. Long story short, we have not raised rates since twenty eighteen, although there have been cost increases, such as personnel costs, material costs, just the cost of doing business obviously increases in three to four years. We've done that through operational enhancements, saving more water, chasing down leaks, bringing that excess charge down, so that we're not paying for that extra water when it's just going down the drain. But with that said, in order to keep and maintain the stability of the fund, now we are getting a sizable increase on that forty percent of the budget. Why, tonight, we've discussed in work session that the prudent measure would be to, to increase the summer rate, which is effective for six months out of the year, and charged to residents on the June through September, excuse me, they are charged on the, that's a tricky one now, they are charged on, on two quarters, and I'll, I'll think about the, which two quarters they're charged, but it is for a total of six months, and, and that's done to capture the, the excess charge that goes along with the high-demand usage.
June through November.
June through November. The, the, the current rate is seven dollars and fifty cents per unit, it's been that way since twenty eighteen. An eight percent increase, which is actually somewhat in line, not exactly, but in line with New York City's increase to both the base and excess rate, will make us whole on that, based on keeping our general trend of water purchasing and, and usage. That would raise the summer rate from seven dollars and fifty cents to eight dollars and ten cents. That would be effective June first of twenty twenty-one, and you would see that on your bill at the end of that first quarter, which you would receive in early September. It would not apply to this last quarter or the bill that you're going to receive in June first. That, that June first bill will be at the winter rate, and it will be at the old rate. Also important to note that the, unlike the document that may have been posted to the website, which was a template, the, the winter rate is not being proposed to have an increase at this point. That, that rate will hold, only increase applied to the summer rate. Just to, just to look at the resolution here, the, the board is permitted to do this by resolution, it's not a local law required. This is done in accordance with our fees and charges generally, so this is inclusive of our fees and charges schedule. Once adopted, the increase that is, I would ask that we would formally amend the cheap fees and charges schedule, so that all of the water rates are then reflective on that, on that document, and everyone is on the same page. Any, any questions?
Yeah, just that little increase that just went up to sixty cents, is that what it was? Can you just explain to the audience that it's per unit, and how many gallons are in a unit?
Absolutely, good question, Bubba. So we, we bill on cubic feet. Each unit is one hundred cubic feet of water or seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. So it's a lot of toilet flushes for the seven fifty or eight, ten, but if you use an irrigation system, we've seen where folks who don't have control of their irrigation system can use four to as many as six units a day just on irrigation, which is quite costly. But the average, the average home, they, they generally use about two hundred units a year without the irrigation.
Any other questions? I'm sure most homeowners have had their sprinklers turned on, or are getting them turned on this month. It's always important to make sure that your system is thoroughly checked for leaks when it's turned on at the beginning of the year, because a leak in your sprinkler system, if it goes undetected, could end up costing quite a bit of money. A lot of water flows through a sprinkler system. So you require a resolution from the board?
I would, going to, I'm going to revise the first resolve clause to state the following. Resolve that the twenty-one, twenty-two village-wide fees and charges schedule dated March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one is herein amended effective for the first quarter, twenty-one, twenty-two water billing period, to increase the summer rate to eight dollars and ten cents. And then everything else is the same.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Mayor, my final one is, is makes me the most excited, I think, because I've been working on Village Hall for a while, and it hasn't gotten the love that it deserves, and, and next year, it's gonna be a hundred years old, so I'd really like to get it in shape. And one of the things that we need to do is, is this, this evaluation study that I have a proposal for. Anyone who's done business in Village Hall knows, the weather outside is as random as the weather inside. It can be hot when it's cold and cold when it's hot, and generally not when you want it to be. Long story short, the building was built in nineteen twenty-two, was built very well. There was a small addition where the police department offices are in the building department, and mayor's office is to that side, built in nineteen sixty-three. The renovation that was done in nineteen ninety-nine did not address the HVAC systems in most of the building. The original steam pipes and steam heat is still in place, we fixed a number of steam leaks, which are surprisingly hard to chase down and, and quite disturbing, not disturbing, you know, disturbing in the sense of it disrupts things to, to fix and find. And the nineteen sixty-three wing has the original combination heat and air conditioning units that are in the wall. Those are original, so those are over fifty years old at this point. So while they did install some central air components, it was very mismatched. There were some combination slim line units, like Mitsubishi-type units used in some offices, some had a formal air handler and compressor system. Long story short, even those units now are at the end of their useful life. Rather than keep chasing each individual piece of equipment and keep making Band-Aid repairs, the right thing to do, that's not only cost-wise, energy-efficient-wise, and overall, to make the environment a professional workspace, is to, is to fix these issues once and for all. The first step is to have it evaluated, though. We need to know what we have existing, what we really need to replace imminently, and then what is a comprehensive way to address HVAC in a building that is a hundred years old at this point. So Linstar is a, is a particular engineering firm that has expertise in this field, this is not just your general civil engineer. I think they might have done work for the library, now that I think about it, but this, these are the folks, this is their bread and butter, this is what they do. They gave a proposal for eighty-three hundred dollars to get this first phase of work done, which I certainly think is reasonable, because they're gonna be crawling through the attic and in the basement, and they're gonna have to do quite a bit of homework to, you know, figure out makes, models, and determine what we need to go forward. So at this point, it would be the board authorizing me to proceed with this, and, and the cost really won't hit this fiscal year, because by the time they get mobilized and do work, we won't be paying any bills until, till the new fiscal year starts, and, and we have, we have money in the engineering line to cover this.
Does anyone have any questions? I can, I can, let me do a testimonial. My, my office is either uncomfortably hot or freezing cold. The units seem to blow hot air even when they're in the off position, and it's, it's very, very uncomfortable. And it's kind of difficult, then, to have to regulate by opening the window, because that's the next love that this building needs to be shown, because the windows are like guillotines. And, you know, you have to be very careful how you open them, and then prop them open with a book, because they don't stay up. And then the wind blows all your papers around the office, so it's, it's, it's not good. And I have one of the better functioning.
Yeah.
Units, so I know in the police department, they've had leaks and all sorts of issues with those wall units.
And Justin. I was just gonna say, I could attest to the mayor's office as well. It's horrible. But, um, quick question, Justin, is the result of this then a written report upon which we could base a capital project?
Exactly. Exactly.
Sorry.
I was just gonna say, the, the library's been going through something similar, and that they were having significant issues with their HVAC, and so they had a report done, and, and I, at our last meeting, they were talking about the particular contractor that they chose, and were absolutely raving about how fantastic they were in implementing the new system, and that, you know, everything is going extremely smoothly, they get regular updates and reports, and everything is scheduled to be done on time as well. So, so they were very pleased with whoever they, the, the contractor that they were using for that. So you might want to just check in with Laura at the library and see, you know, what her take on it is.
Definitely.
Um, trustee Finelli.
Yes, I just wanted to say, it's long overdue, but let us make sure we do the windows.
Absolutely.
So that makes these go right out the window.
And, and just as a sidebar, I had a quick discussion with Linstar. They might actually even, once they get rolling, they might actually offer to help me put the bid spec together for the, for the actual material for the windows. Again, waiting now, the costs have probably gone up. If anyone who's doing home improvement work, windows probably have the largest increase of any material going around, but be that as it may, it's gotta be done, so we'll, we'll save it by the install in-house, but my goal is to get that done by the end of the calendar year. We'll celebrate its hundredth year anniversary in style.
Right. So I seek a motion to approve the professional services agreement for the HVAC system.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. I have a resolution, I'll, I'll go to mine, and then we'll have Treasurer Gutwine talk to us about the refunding bond resolution. Two years ago, the library board chair, Pamela Dubitsky, resigned after a great tenure of service and having seen the library through its massive transformation project. And she was replaced as chair for the remainder of her term by Lauren Gottfried, who had been a member of the library board for, for some time. That, that term ends at the end of this month, May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And so we're at the point of needing to appoint a new chair to the library board of trustees. The library board, for those who don't know, is made up of both appointees from the Town of Amerenek and appointees from the Village of Larchmont, because we do share the expenses. Larchmont actually owns the building, so we have one extra member, and that member becomes the, the, Larchmont always appoints the chair of the library board. The chair of the library board is always a Village of Larchmont resident, is another way to say that. This evening, we're going to actually, I'm going to seek a motion to reappoint Lauren Gottfried as the chair to serve her own full term in that position. And that would be from June first, two thousand twenty-one, through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. So I'm going to seek a motion.
So moved.
And I'll seek a second.
I'll move.
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great.
If I could, Mayor, I, I just would like to just say a word about Lauren and the, the library board. They've done an amazing job through COVID, really have been an example to other libraries around the county. Were, you know, not very big, but our circulation actually rivaled that of Yonkers and White Plains, because of the availability, you know, we, they allowed, you know, access to the library, you know, following all the rules, and just did an excellent job. And they've also, during that time, have also guided the library through two pretty big construction projects as well, so they've, they've really, they've done an excellent job, and Lauren has really done a wonderful job leading the way.
Yes, absolutely. Our library is always a shining example of what a community library can and should be, and that's only, you know, possible through the leadership of the, the board, the library board and the chair, and of course, the library director, we have a great library director as well.
Yes.
Yes, so thank you very much, and thank you to Lauren Gottfried for stepping up to fill Pamela's vacancy, and for also desiring to have a full term as chair again.
I think you did the, did a motion and a second. Did you?
Did you?
Yes, we voted also.
Okay, sorry.
Thanks, Jim. Keeping us honest. So now we're going to move to the refunding bond resolution. Kimberly, would you like me to share the memo?
Sure, I'm just going to read it, mayor.
Okay, then you can just read it.
Okay.
The board has all of these documents and they were all posted on the calendar with the agenda.
Yes, so I'm requesting that the board adopt the two thousand nineteen and two thousand thirteen refunding bond resolution. The outstanding bonds from two thousand oh nine and two thousand thirteen are one million, six hundred and ten thousand and nine hundred and fifty thousand. The bonds were issued at an interest rate ranging from two point seven five to four percent. These bonds funded many different projects and debt service is paid by various funds. The summary of the refunding results reveal a taxes and borrowing rate of one point three three percent. The two thousand oh nine bonds are callable, eligible to be paid off earlier than the maturity date after seven fifteen, two thousand twenty one. And the two thousand thirteen bonds are callable after nine one, two thousand twenty one. Current refunding can take place ninety days prior to the call date, which would enable the village to close on the refunding anytime after June first of two thousand twenty one. Maturity starting in fiscal year two thousand twenty two through the final maturity in fiscal year twenty five for the two thousand and nine bond and the final maturity in fiscal year thirty would be refunded. The new debt service on the refunding bonds would begin in fiscal year twenty two. The village will realize a net savings in each fiscal year. The net budgetary savings will be in total, in total is approximately a hundred and thirty nine thousand over the next nine years. This includes fiscal year two thousand twenty two. The total bonding refunding will be approximately two million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The expected closing cost is between thirty five and forty five thousand. And this is what I mentioned in April nineteenth at the board of trustees meeting, the cost has been netted out.
So how much will this refunding save us in the upcoming budget year? Do you have that calculation?
So it it by year by year, it's about twenty five thousand and then it drops down to ten and then twelve. So it's different each year.
Okay. Thank you.
Just just to piggyback on that question slash comment, mayor, the reason why we did not put a savings or decrease the debt service line in the twenty one twenty two budget was because of the cost of refinancing. So in the twenty two twenty three budget, we will show that savings as a budget budgeted savings in debt service.
So so because of the cost of of refinancing in the the upcoming budgetary year, we would have had a savings, but we will not have a savings because of that cost. Thank you. Okay. Great. But I do like the idea that over time we are saving what is a significant amount of money. So thank you, treasurer Gutwine, for shepherding this through and we did get a great rate, yes?
Yes, we did.
Can't get much better. So you need from us a resolution?
Yes.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes, we have the resolution.
So I'll I'll say the roll call, mayor, and then this way you don't have to do.
I was going to pop up the resolution just for everybody to take a.
Sure.
And then you want to take them, you want to take a motion in a second and then call the roll on the vote.
Okay, so here's the refunding bond resolution. So I seek a motion to approve the refunding bond resolution.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Then Justin could call the.
Okay, that was Sarah, so Justin caller.
Trustee Casaza Harmon?
Aye.
Trustee Bauer?
Aye.
Trustee Finelli?
Aye.
Trustee Brennan?
Aye.
Mayor Walsh?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
The ayes do have it.
Okay, fabulous, moving on. Resolutions that were set at previous work sessions. We authorized the treasurer to hold the tax lien sale, which is taking place on June second.
Yes.
Good. Has the list gotten smaller?
I assume. Slightly.
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 We appointed Francesco, excuse me, Francesco Di Costanzo to the police department. We approved the promotion of Lisa Pampilio to sergeant for the police department. We authorized myself to execute a settlement agreement with police officer Martinez. The board of trustees voted on a resolution to support the Westchester tenants' right to cancel eviction proceedings. We appointed Joseph Abuti to the police department. And we allocated forty five thousand dollars from the Isaac donation to be used for the Constitution Park landscaping plan. And now we're at number ten, which is here are those persons who wish to address the board. If anyone out there watching wishes to address the board at this moment, they can raise their hand. And we'll give that a moment. No hands being raised. We'll move on to number eleven. Approve the minutes of meetings. So the first meeting that we have here are the minutes of the regular board meeting of Monday, April nineteenth. And we were all in attendance. So we can all vote. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of April nineteenth.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, we have the minutes of the work session from April twenty sixth. We were all present. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. And last up, we have the minutes of the work session from Monday, May third, two thousand twenty one. Let the record show that the minutes that were attached to the agenda have the incorrect date on them. It says Monday, May fifth, but it was actually Monday, May third. We were all present. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. And now to the coup de grâce, our favorite part of the, except for the adjournment, our favorite part of the meeting. The approval of the bills, I'll turn it over to trustee Herman.
Thank you, mayor and board. I have reviewed the invoices associated with the check register for bill list dated May seventeenth, two thousand twenty. They appear to be in order. I move that the board resolved to pay all of the invoices listed therein in the amount of two hundred thousand, seven hundred and ninety seven dollars and fourteen cents. Do I have a second? Well, I move, okay. Did I, all right, do you prefer, I usually move, but would you?
You usually move, but I think that's fine. That's how we've.
Okay. Right, do I have a second? Anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very tentative on paying our bills, board.
We had about forty.
I was waiting for Bridger, we finally sort of started.
I thought we weren't going to pay our vendors this month.
Not good.
Thank you all.
So we have reached the end of our meeting. I seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Everybody.
Thank you, LMC.
Thanks, Sean.